All right. Good evening, everyone. This is Jim Ostrowski. I work with the Environmental Support Division here at Eagle. And I welcome you to our public hearing this evening on Enbridge Line 5, application for the MPDES or National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Waste Water Permit. I'm glad to see some of you join us. We've got about 29 attendees logged in right now, and I'm sure we'll get several more continue to get logged in as we get started. Couple of quick housekeeping guidelines. First, all lines are muted. So at this point, you can hear us, but we can't hear you. And I'll explain how we'll unmute the lines later on, so you can make comments. I just want to let you all know that we're recording this hearing, just like we have the past ones. So you'll be able to find a copy of the public hearing recording up on the Line 5 website, and I will explain where that is at the end tonight. So that's what we're doing with that. Okay, so as we get started, the first thing I want to do is introduce Teresa Seidel and have her come up here and make a quick introductory statement. So Teresa, are you there?
I'm here. So good evening. I guess it's evening. We've been doing these during the daytime. So this is the first evening hearing we've done since we started the hearings. And I just want to thank you for joining us tonight on this really beautiful night, which I'm sure many of you would prefer to be outside and enjoying. But we're glad you took the time out of your schedule to join us to give us your comments on the Line 5 Enbridge Permit applications that are in front of Eagle at this time. Thank you for coming. I simply want to remind you that this is a public hearing and not a public meeting. So we will not be interacting with you this evening. We will be here to take your comments and get your your concerns written out, as well as being recorded, as Jim will talk about in a minute. And I've brought a couple of staff along with us so that they'll be able to listen in and make sure we're gathering all the information from you. Please take your time and give us your comments. Jim will explain the format, but we do want to make sure we hear from you thoroughly and that we understand what your concerns are as it relates to the issuance of these applications. Please also remember that it's important that we get substantive comments, so comments that are related to the actual applications and not just simply for or against a permit. We don't make our decisions simply based on whether or not people are for or against something. We actually have to follow the rules and the law that are in front of us and whether or not an application meets the requirements of that, of those laws and rules. So please, as you're giving your comments tonight, recognize that those are the kind of comments that are really helpful to us and that we look forward to hearing those. Please also note that we will leave the comment period open until October 19th at 11:59 PM. And then we will close the file and begin our review at that time, based on all the comments and concerns we've heard. And we'll pose additional questions back to Enbridge if there are things that we believe we need in order to make a full decision. So thank you for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing what you have to offer. And we'll get going here in just a few minutes, and Jim will walk you through the process. Thank you.
There we go. I mean, myself. All right. So thanks, Teresa. I'm going to go ahead and have the other staff that are here tonight with us from Eagle go ahead and turn your cameras on, and we'll just do some introductions. So Christine, do you want to go first?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Christine Alexander. I manage Permit Section in the Water Resources Division. My section is responsible for issuing NPDES permits and groundwater discharge permits for the state of Michigan.
Thank you. And James?
My name is James Clift. I am one of the Deputy Directors at Eagle.
All right, Terrick?
Good evening. I'm Terrick Buckmaster. I supervise the Industrial and Stormwater Permits Unit in Permit Section in the Water Resources Division.
Hey, and Matt?
Good evening. My name is Matt Tomlinson, and I'll be serving as a co-host working behind the scenes on this hearing this evening.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And so you will be hearing from Matt probably behind the scenes through some chats in the chat box, as well as help me call up names. So first point of order for the hearing is I actually have to read off a lengthy public hearing statement. And then we'll get into actually hearing your comments. So what I'm going to do is, excuse me, but I'm actually going to read our statement here. And then we'll move on. So get my slide up. All right. Okay, so procedures for the hearing tonight. This public hearing today is the first of two public hearings that will be used to take comment on the proposed National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit, or NPDES Permit, to Enbridge Energy for the proposed discharge of wastewater from the construction of a proposed tunnel under the lake bed of the Straits of Mackinac. The second public hearing, oh, that's actually today. So today's public hearing, we also held another one last week on the 29th of September. The department previously held two public information sessions that included presentations on the proposed construction project and NPDES permit authorizing wastewater discharges from the project. Recordings of these public meetings are available to be viewed on the michigan.gov/line5 website. In summary, the proposed construction of the tunnel includes two sites, one on the North Shore and the other on the South Shore of the Straits of Mackinac, with majority of the construction activity taking place at the South Shore site. The project will withdraw up to 1.9 million gallons of water per day from the Straits of Mackinac. The requested discharge from Outfall 001 on the South Shore is a maximum of 5 million gallons per day, with an expected average of 1.4 million gallons per day of treated construction wastewater. The requested discharge from Outfall 003 on the North Shore is a maximum of 1 million gallons per day of treated construction water. The requested discharge from Outfall 002, also on the North Shore, is for peak stormwater flows. After construction of the tunnel, the request changed to discharge treated groundwater seepage with estimated maximum flows of 75,000 gallons per day from the South Shore Outfall 001 and 1,500 gallons per day from the North Shore Outfall 003. Also after construction, a one-time discharge of hydrostatic pressure test water from the South Shore Outfall 001 has a maximum of 1 million gallons per day. Just got to scroll down here. Sorry about that. Peak stormwater flows are requested for each of the three outfalls peak stormwater flows are requested for each of the three outfalls for the duration of the construction and after construction. All discharges are directed back into the Straits of Mackinac. So how the comment process will work today. For those of you who pre-registered to attend today's hearing and indicated you would like to make a comment, we will call your name and unmute your microphone so you can make your comment. We will call your name in the order in which you registered. Once we have called the names of everyone who indicated they want to make a comment during the registration, we will open it up to comment from other attendees. At that time, if you have not made a comment and wish to do so, please click the raise hand icon to indicate you wish to make a comment. If calling in by phone only, please hit star nine on your phone to raise your hand. We will call on those who have their hand raised to make a comment in the general order in which their hand was raised. Each person will have three minutes to make their comment. I will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. If I indicate your time has expired, please wrap up your comments immediately so that we can allow the next person to make their comment. Please be sure to state your name in any organization you represent prior to starting your comment. Please note that we will not be responding to your comments or answering questions during this hearing. We will be simply listening to your comments for the record. If you would like to make a comment but do not wish to make a verbal comment today, you are welcome to submit a written comment to the department. Written comments may be submitted online in our My Waters database. A link is being provided in the chat directly to the comment submittal form. Comments can also be made and submitted to Jessica Stiles at the following address. Water Resources Division, Eagle, PO Box 30458, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7958. Or by email at eagle, E-G-L-E, enbridge, E-N-B-R-I-D-G-E, comments, C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S, at michigan.gov. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be a part of the information that Eagle will consider in the proposed National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit. Comments received will not be responded to at this time, but will be included in response to public comments document and be part of the permanent record. All comments and information received will be available in My Waters on our online database. The public comment period is open until October 19th, 2020. All right, so that is the end of my official statement. Just want to remind everybody what I'm going to do is several of you pre-registered to attend this hearing, and when you pre-registered, there's a box you could check if you wanted to make a comment. And if you checked yes, I have a list of your names here, and I pulled the list probably about 3 o'clock or 3:30 or so. So if you registered after that, I might not have your name right now. But I'm going to call your names off. When I call your name, Matt's going to find you and unmute your line. You will know you're unmuted because a little box will pop up on your screen that will say, do you want to unmute? Or you'll have a little microphone appear, and you'll click to unmute it. We'll give you a second, and we'll let you know when you're muted. When we call on you and you're unmuted, make sure you state your name and any organization that you represent. And if you didn't pre-register and say you want to make a comment, you want to make a comment tonight, that's fine, too. At the end, once we're done with our list, we will call off names by raising your hand. So you'll raise your hand, and we'll call you off, and you can make a comment that way as well. In the chat box, you'll see some links that Matt was sending out to some of the things I referenced in the public hearing statements. So you want to make sure you check that out. That's in the chat box there. And yeah, so just want to remember, mind you, you have three minutes, and I will be tracking your time, and I'll be giving you the one-minute warning, and also let you know when it's three minutes is up, so you can wrap it up. All right, so I think I've gone through pretty much everything. So what I'm going to do now is start looking at my list to make official comments here tonight, and I think staff will turn their cameras on and we'll listen in. Thank you. So Matt's going to help me find these people and unmute. So the first person, Matt, we have on our list to make a comment is Jennifer McKay. And the person on deck, and I'll list the person on deck afterwards as well. So after Jennifer McKay is Denise Trabick Pointer. So is Jennifer McKay in attendance?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You go right ahead and say your name and organization you're with.
Great, thank you. My name's Jennifer McKay, and I'm the Policy Director at tip of the Mint Waterside Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments tonight on Enbridge's NPDES application. The permit application has a number of deficiencies that need to be addressed before the permit can be deemed administratively complete. A full anti-degradation demonstration needs to be provided and analyzed prior to the approval of the permit. The demonstration must show that issuing the permit will not result in degradation of the receiving water's quality. The anti-degradation demonstration by Enbridge failed to accomplish this and therefore is incomplete. For all waters, the level of water quality necessary to protect existing uses shall be maintained and protected. And in addition, Lake Michigan and the region of the proposed discharge is listed under 303D as impaired for fish and selfish consumption. Enbridge claims the water will be treated to attain discharge standards, but the question that remains unanswered is how? What treatment process is proposed? It is stated that specialized infrastructure is necessary to treat the unique type of wastewater produced during tunnel construction, but there's no destruction provided. How can Eagle consider approval of an NPDES permit without knowing the exact treatment method to ascertain if the proposed method will in fact protect these designated uses and ensure that there will be no lowering of water quality with respect to non-attainment? In addition, Enbridge relies upon the perceived benefits with respect to employment for construction of the tunnel. However, those benefits are only temporary, proposed to last two years, whereas the discharges to Lake Michigan are expected to last throughout the lifetime of the project, which could extend throughout its projected 99-year lease. As a result, the two years of minimal employment benefits do not justify the 99 years of detrimental discharges to Lake Michigan. Furthermore, Enbridge fails to account for the environmental impacts associated with discharges. The proposed discharges will occur within Great Lakes coastal wetlands. In particular, the Site 1598 St. Ignace Wetland has been monitored chemically, physically, and biologically as part of the Great Lakes Basin-wide Coastal Wetland Monitoring Program. This site is among the most pristine in Lake Michigan, and it's used as a benchmark representing the best conditions that can be expected among those wetlands that remain today. There's a lack of information in the permit application, and the following at a minimum is needed prior to Eagle making a decision. Final, Outfall design details currently under engineering review. The slurry treatment process and how the bentonite will be treated and properly disposed of. What additives will be used in the treatment process and what monitoring and reporting requirements are needed? What is the contingency plan for disposal, and which needs to be determined in advance? What chemicals will be proposed used in the drilling process? And the discharging, monitoring, and reporting for that? And what are you reuse, which Enbridge indicates is their general approach to water management? But at the same point in time, the anti-degradation demonstration that says water use is not a viable alternative. So this conflicting information needs to be addressed and rectified prior to any permit.
Three minutes?
Thank you very much, and we'll be submitting written comments for further explanation of everything.
Thank you. Yeah, just want to remind you, if you don't have enough time, you can always submit written comments to extend your comment if you need to. Okay, Matt, so the next person that I have on my list, Denise Trabick Pointer. And after that, Michael Wazinski. Is Denise in attendance?
No, not seeing Denise, so I'm going to look for Michael here.
Okay, Michael Wazinski?
Not seeing Michael either.
Okay, let's move down our list. Patty Peek. Is Patty Peek in attendance today?
No.
All right, after Patty Peek, Sean McBirdy? Sean, S-E-A-N?
Nope.
All right. Just want to remind everybody that's listening in, basically what happens is that people register, pre-register to attend, and in there, you indicated whether or not you wanted to make a comment. These people just maybe registered and are not attending, so. All right, looking down my list here, I got to move down here a little bit. Lisa Patrell? Is there a Lisa Patrell in attendance?
No. Kenneth is here, though.
Kenneth Kytta. Kenneth Kytta, we muted your line on our end. You can go ahead and mute on your end, and go ahead and make your comment. We see you there.
Okay, thank you. This is Ken Kita with WSP. And thank you for the opportunity to express my support for the Enbridge application for the NPDES permit for the Line 5 tunnel. During construction, Enbridge will be providing treatment and discharging the water using best management practices. And then after, during operation, the water will be treated as well. And essentially, it is lake water that is being recirculated back into the lake. Enbridge, my experience with them is that they have demonstrated good environmental stewardship and intend to go above and beyond the permit requirements with their environmental compliance. I just want to conclude my comments by, again, thanking for the opportunity to submit these comments. As a rural resident of the Upper Peninsula who relies on propane for home heating, I support the tunnel to continue providing a reliable supply of propane at a reasonable cost to the Upper Peninsula, so I wholeheartedly support the construction of the Line 5 tunnel and approval of this permit. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
All right, thank you. Okay, my next person on our list to comment is Bentley Johnson. Bentley Johnson?
No.
Okay. Diane Wells?
Yes.
Okay, Diane Wells. We have unmuted your mic, so you can go ahead and make your comment. You have three minutes.
Very good. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
My name is Diane Wells. I'm a lifelong resident of Michigan, and I'm very grateful for your allowing me to share my thoughts this evening. Enbridge is a privately-held foreign oil company using Michigan's private resources for its profit. It caused the largest inland oil spill in U.S. history. It has allowed Line 5 to operate decades past its life expectancy, and every day it operates is another day inviting disaster. There have already been releases from Line 5, and there will be more, with devastating irreversible consequences to Michigan's water, wildlife, economy, and the people who live here. Enbridge does not care. This project puts public trust resources at tremendous risk for the private benefit of a foreign oil company. Enbridge does not care about Michigan's people or its environment, and it will never do the right thing when no one is looking. Please consider this when you are looking at their applications. This company has violated the terms of its easement, which allows it to exist, and has violated the public trust, and it has repeatedly shown us who it is as a company. No amount of message manipulation from its spin doctors can change the facts. Your website states that Eagle's mission is to protect Michigan's environment and public health. If that is true, I don't see how you could allow an oil tunnel to be built through one of the most ecologically sensitive parts of the Great Lakes, which is held in trust for the people of Michigan. I expect that a full and independent environmental impact study with full citizen engagement would be completed for your deliberations, as well as careful vetting of all contractors to ensure they are qualified and have no conflicts of interest in determining approval or denial of any permits in question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next person with question to comment is David Goldthorpe. David Goldthorpe?
I do not have that person. I just have a singular David listed, no last name.
Okay. By the way, if we do call you and you're like calling in or something, don't worry, you'll have a chance to comment. You'll just raise your hand after we get through our list here. Mike Ripley. Mike Ripley in attendance?
No.
Okay, is there a Robert Beckler? B-U-E-C-H?
Yes.
Okay. Robert, we've muted your line, so you can unmute and go right ahead.
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Bob Beckler. I'm a hydrogeologist, and I've worked and lived in northern Michigan for almost 30 years. And I did have a comment at the last meeting, but I just wanted to add that I talked about fractures and liniments in the surface limestone that could potentially transport contaminants and waste. And sometimes these cracks and liniments turn into karst topography where actually caves and voids can form and also cause a lot of sinkholes and so on. So I'm a little concerned about if any of this waste material got into those cracks and liniments and possibly caves and voids, it could really turn into a huge problem. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we did see that Mike Ripley is here. He actually got his hand up right now, Matt, so going back to Mike Ripley, if you want to go ahead, you should be unmuted, and you can go ahead and make your comment.
Hi, Jim, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go right ahead. Say your name and any organization you're with.
Thank you. My name is Mike Ripley. I'm the Environmental Coordinator for the Tipewa Ottawa Resource Authority, or CORA, in Sault Ste. Marie. CORA is composed of five Native American tribes in the 1836 Treaty area that have rights to hunt and fish. The heart of our treaty, the 1836 Treaty area, is the Straits of Mackinac, and we are particularly concerned about this permit, this wastewater discharge permit, because it could have a direct negative impact to tribal treaty resources. The Straits of Mackinac and the surrounding waters of Northern Lake Michigan and Northern Lake Huron are the most important areas for tribal commercial fishing. Over 50% of all the fish harvested by tribal commercial fishers comes from this area. So most of the whitefish and lake trout sold in Michigan restaurants comes from this area. The reason that this area is so productive is that there are numerous rocky shoals and reefs in the Straits of Mackinac where lake trout and whitefish spawn. The eggs are laid on the rocky reefs, and they rest between the rocks where they are not only protected from predators, but the cold, clean waters of the straits nurture the eggs until they hatch. So it is vital. The discharge of wastewater into this area will have a direct impact on these spawning reefs because the water treatment plant, as designed, is not adequate to remove bentonite from the wastewater. Bentonite is a clay which has been shown to destroy fish eggs because it smothers the eggs and suffocates them. Experts have shown how insidious bentonite can be once it gets into the water column. We are especially concerned because climate change has led to more intense rainstorms in the Great Lakes, just like climate scientists predicted that it would. The latest evidence of more intense storms resulted in the tragedy of the Edenville Dam failure. When such a storm happens in our area, it will certainly result in impairments when the inadequate Enbridge treatment plant will be overwhelmed. This is not considered in this permit. Originally, they said that a 10-year storm would lead to 17 million gallons of water a day
in a minute?
infiltrate the wastewater treatment plant. This permit does not take into account extreme rain events, and this permit should be denied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I haven't worked my way through the list of people who pre-registered and indicated they wanted to make a comment, those who actually did attend. Like I said, some people might have attended a different hearing and registered for this one and just didn't attend. So what we're going to do right now is if people would like to make a comment who didn't already indicate they want to make comment when they registered, what we're going to do is have you raise your hand. So click the raise hand icon. If you're on the phone, just want to remind you, you can click star nine, and we'll call your phone number. We'll call you by your phone number because we can't see your name. Got about 46 people in attendance tonight, so just to let you know that. So I'm going to start with the first name here, the person that's got their hand raised, and that's Marguerite Kearney. Marguerite Kearney? We are muting your mic, so you can go ahead. Again, remember to state your name and any organization you're with, please.
All right, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment today. My name is Abby Kearney, and I'm commenting on behalf of the Environmental Law and Policy Center in the Michigan Climate Action Network. While Enbridge may present the tunnel as the solution to risks posed by the current aging and precarious pipeline, the Corps should be very wary of this manufactured illusion. Eagle should not view Enbridge's permit application as a solution to the multitude of problems associated with its existing line. Rather, the proposed tunnel should be considered in light of the use of the pipeline. The proposed project solves no problems. It only creates more. One, the continued operation of the existing risky pipeline for five to 10 years. Two, a nine-to-nine-year commitment to fossil fuels and the resultant climate change. Three, the ongoing harms to the treaty-protected rights caused by the repeated spills and leaks along the length of the Line 5 pipeline. And four, the environmental consequences attended with constructing a tunnel beneath the straits, withdrawing millions of gallons of water from, and then discharging treated wastewater into the straits and filling wetlands. ELPC and the Michigan Climate Action Network request that Eagle deny Enbridge's NPDES permit because it creates significant risk of irreparable harm to Michigan's environment. We will submit detailed written We will submit detailed written comments to Eagle, but wish to highlight in the following points today. One, permit application, the permit application is incomplete with unknown impacts to the residents and nearby park. A, the purpose of an NPDES permit is to control the discharge of pollutants by imposing limitations to protect the environment. There are too many unknowns about Enbridge's permit application. For example, Enbridge is requesting to release up to five million gallons per day of treated wastewater back in Lake Michigan on the south shore. But they have not made the treatment process clear. We do not yet know what chemicals will be used in the tunneling process and how the wastewater will be treated to remove those chemicals. If the waters of the straits are contaminated, it would likely harm both the ecology of the straits and the nearby residents that rely on this space as a resource. Eagle should not blindly trust that the proposed process for this wastewater will be protected. The permit application fails to consider how the impacts of climate change will affect this project. A, the consequences of a change in climate caused by the increase in greenhouse gas emissions affect the parameters that are considered in the permit process, given that the basins for holding and treating water will be near the shoreline. The permit application must consider the potential changes to the lakeshore. This includes significant climate-driven shifts in high and low water levels, and increasingly unpredictable and intense storm events. Eagle cannot ignore how climate change is a factor in this project. Eagle should reject and reject permit application as incomplete. If Eagle does not consider the permit, it should include, if Eagle does consider the permit, it should include an analysis of how climate change will impact the project.
My name is Lily Kearney. The water in the straits is so important to us in Michigan, and it is Eagle's job to make sure it stays safe and clean. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate that. All right. So, we're gonna move on to our next name here, Zachary Watson. Zachary, we've unmuted your line, so you can go ahead and make your comment.
Hi Jim, thanks. My name is Zach. I'm a student and a farmer in Lelandau County. And over this past year, it's really, it feels like more than that, but it's only about a year ago I started getting really into plants and have become a bit of an amateur botanist and just seeing the world completely differently. Last semester at school at the University of Michigan, I started working at the U-Misher Barium and was mounting specimens and doing data entry, and then communicating with all these, these scientists and these people who have, have become really, are really conscious of what's going on in the natural world. It, there was a certain level of despair that hit me when you, you start understanding the, the way that our culture and people in general are affecting the climate and affecting, you know, our state and the water. And I, you know, I, I wanna be a dad someday, and I wanna feel good making that choice, right? And, and right now, with the current complete disregard for the natural world and, and kind of the shoe-horning of these issues and this bureaucratic kind of forum, I'm, I'm fearful. I'm fearful for our future. And I would ask that you, you would please consider my generation and the generation that just, you just heard from, when making these decisions, that, that we ought to be considering. Many generations ahead, the kind of impacts that will be had, because we are the ones that will bear the brunt of your decisions. And why we would even consider putting, you know, our, our future, our collective, you know, heritage in the hands of this, this foreign company with a, a pretty poor track record in our state is beyond me. I, I really do appreciate your time, and I, I do hope you will consider what we've said here.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, next person, hand raised. Aubrey Macau Deluc. You are muted now. Go ahead.
Right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Aubrey Macau Deluc. I'm the Environmental Specialist for Bay Mills Indian Community. I offer these comments on behalf of the sovereign nation of Bay Mills Indian Community. As you know, Bay Mills Indian Community is the signatory of the 1836 Treaty of Washington, which is the ceded territory to the United States for the creation of the state of Michigan. In that treaty, Bay Mills reserved the rights to hunt, fish, and gather in that ceded territory, which includes the Straits of Mackinac. The U.S. Constitution states that all treaties are made, and which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land. Currently, Eagle lacks sufficient detail regarding Enbridge's tunnel design and lacks sufficient information and how to mitigate the harmful impacts that result from this construction. Enbridge significantly changed the project design from what has been evaluated by the state of Michigan in prior alternative risk assessments, and still has not answered the pressing questions from tribal nations on how Enbridge will remove items such as the bentonite clay from the slurry waters prior to discharge. Bentonite sticks to everything it touches, much like oil, and will, will result in massive fish kills throughout the Straits of Mackinac, which is a, a resource that's protected by the treaty. Also of significant concern are creatures that cannot move as quickly, such as freshwater mussels, macroinvertebrates, and other small aquatic animals. As a sovereign government with the responsibility for managing and protecting the Great Lakes, Bay Mills opposes the placement of Line 5 in the tunnel beneath the Straits of Mackinac, because it lengthens the life of a corroded, dented, and aging pipeline that is an immediate threat to the vast ecosystem of the Great Lakes beyond the Straits of Mackinac, and is a threat to the treaty-protected resources of the tribes, a threat to the cultural resource that is the Straits of Mackinac, and provides limited value to our state's families and businesses. Our people, the Anishinaabe, have a teaching that says the decisions we make today should result in a sustainable world seven generations into the future. It reminds us to understand decisions we make are not limited to the immediate concerns today, but instead have implications long after we are gone.
One minute.
We urge Eagle to adopt this teaching as well and evaluate all the risks and harms Line 5 poses in its entire six hundred and forty-five miles of pipeline that runs through the state of Michigan, and evaluate what this decision will really mean for the future for everyone. I speak for the ninety-nine miles that will remain at grave risk from this pipeline. Given the risks and harms to species, economy, wetlands, water quality, cultural resources, and tri, tribal treaty resources, it is a pipeline that should be decommissioned as quickly as possible. Make watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joe Kramer. Joe Kramer, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead.
Alright, good evening Jim. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Joe Kramer. I'm an international operating engineer as a pipeline rep. Uh, I had an opportunity to work with Enbridge for the last fifteen years now. They're a reputable company. I think we need to get that pipe off the bottom of the lake, get it in a tunnel, so we can be able to protect the environment. Your last caller's talked about protecting the wildlife, the fishery. I, I couldn't agree more. Let's, let's let them get this in the tunnel and protect that environment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next up, Sharon McLeod. Sharon McLeod. You are now unmuted, so you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say that I fully agree with Mike Ripley and Diane Wells. I'm a lifelong resident of Michigan. I'm also a resident of the state of Florida, and I live just outside the Gulf of Mexico, where they had a tragic oil spill. And I can tell you through experience, it's not pretty, the amount of fish left in our Gulf. The looks of it, the oil still you can see on the water. And you can bet they did their best to clean it up, but it's sort of like an O-L situation. And I fear, for the love of Christ, that should happen in Michigan. Seems all the state of Michigan has left is their water for their tourism. Oh, like Mike Ripley said, what about the Indians and the treaty? And I think all that needs to be considered also is the treatment of wastewater, exactly what are you treating it with? And I wondered if, if uh Enbridge would be willing to drink that treated wastewater. And that's my comment for tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, next person up, Sylvia Pivko. Sylvia Pivko. I've unmuted your line, so you can go ahead.
Thank you, Sylvia Pivko from Toronto, Ontario. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll be very short. I too want to support the comments that Diane Wells made, and also just highlight the honoring of the indigenous treaty rights in the consultation. I just don't know that in this day and age, we can't come up with more creative solutions that don't put so much at risk. This is a very, very, very high-risk endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next. I got a person named David here, and I think that's David Goldthorpe, I believe. So, David, your lines are muted. Go ahead, and please make sure you state your, your name and any organization you're with.
My name is David. My name is David Goldthorpe. I, I own several businesses along U.S. too. I'm in the hospitality industry. We have properties in Mackinac County, Luce County, Delta County, and Schoolcraft County. Most of them touch the shores of Lake Michigan or are in fact affected by that. I've lived in the Straits area for over thirty years. I currently live on Lake Michigan, less than a mile water distance from the pipeline. I believe that the pipeline under the straits has been there since the late fifties. I have never remotely focused on it until recently hearing of opposition to it. I have never heard of a leak involving Line 5 under the straits here, and understand the recent concerns on age of the line, and that a rupture of a transmission line by a freighter boat happened last year, putting something in the water there. And there was fear that it was that, that line, but it didn't, it didn't rupture that line. Uh, the building of a tunnel would secure the, the rupture of that line. I think that it has a great economic impact on our communities in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. It has an economic impact on the transmission of oil and gas throughout our state and many states that are neighboring. Enbridge employs close to a thousand or more U.S. citizens, even though they are a foreign pipeline company.
One minute.
They are a country out of Canada. They also, they also border one of our Great Lakes there. And I believe that they have, have our environmental concerns fully in hand. I have had the opportunity to come in contact with many of the people that have worked, even before it was named Enbridge, it was uh Lakehead Pipeline. That pipeline group, there were several people out of Escanaba, Manasteeq, along U.S. too. And it, and it was very viable employment for many people in those communities. I understand that the economic impact would be great for us. Leaving a pipeline in the water as is right now is probably not acceptable based on the age of the pipes and concerns. I also know that we have concerns over a lot of different things. I also know that the amount of water that's used in the process of the construction is about equal to the two of the Olympic-sized pools each day. And they are treating that to bring it back into acceptable levels.
Just three minutes, sir.
I also understand that a lot of our freshwater mussels have cleaned our waterways and taken a lot of plant vegetations that are important for other aquatic species in our area. And with that, I'm very supportive of what they do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, Horst Schmitt. Horst Schmitt. We have unmuted you, so you can unmute your line and go right ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, can you understand me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Horst Schmitt. I'm with the Upper Peninsula Environmental Coalition, and we believe that there's an alternate way to send the oil to Sarnia through uh Enbridge's Line 6B. Uh, we um have talked with the former director of the DEQ at a meeting, and she had mentioned that she, that she had to constantly be on alert, because she could not trust Enbridge to do the right thing. The, so, so we, we recommend that the application be rejected. The other thing I wanted to mention is some of the dangers that were mentioned earlier. I won't repeat them, but the whole issue of, of, of what could happen when wastewater is released or when there is some type of accident and, and the polluted water is then released. You know, we get assurances, but we get no way of, of knowing that, that this is going to not, not have an accident. As a matter of fact, the chances are there will be an accident. Uh, we, we know from, uh, you know, Buffalo Reef up in Keweenaw County has, has a fishing area that is full of cobblestones with algae, which allows the young fish to mature. And one-third of it is gone because of the creeping sands with copper in them that is killing the algae and the ability of the reef to be a viable habitat. So, so I think we need to, you know, keep that in mind when we're looking at, at this. The same, same problem comes up when you look at the fishing grounds that could be destroyed if, by a gold mine that they propose in Alaska.
One minute.
Destroying our, our, our food, destroying the way of life of our Native Americans is, is a, is a horrible thing to do. And again, and the final comment I want to make is, you know, the dangers of drilling in, in rock and sediment that apparently has not been fully explored by the company. It should, you know, warn us that they cannot, uh, you know, assure us that there is not going to be some kind of blowout or some, something that will create a collapse, which will force them to dig out a machine that is, is taking out the rock in, in, in the formation, and then not being able to get it added because of the nature of, of the project. If you have a tunnel and you have ground above it, you can go, go in straight down. But if you do not have that option as you do in the straits, how are they going to get the, the machine out? So, it's, it's
Three minutes.
Or dangerous than it, uh, you know, appears in, in the application materials presented by Enbridge. And I think the people who are looking at this from another point of view bring up all of these dangers. Well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you for, for listening to me tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay, everybody. I don't, right now, see any, any other hands raised, so I'm gonna do another call-out for people who would like to make a comment, who haven't commented yet. If you'd like to make a comment, you can click the raise hand icon, and we'll call you up. If you're on the phone and If you're on the phone, and we do have a few people on the phone. If you'd like to make a comment, you hit star nine. And I know earlier I saw someone on the phone who had their hand up, but I think you put your hand down. So that's fine, but if you're on the phone and you'd like to make a comment, hit star nine. And we will unmute your line. Otherwise, you can raise your hand and I'll give everybody a, a minute here. While we're waiting, up on the screen, I've got a listing of other ways to make your comments. So if you feel you didn't, weren't able to voice all your comments today or afterwards, you think that. Maybe you wanted to make more of a comment. Or you did comment at all and you want to make a comment, you can always submit a written comment and up on the screen are the different ways to do that, you can see that. If you look in your chat box on your toolbar under chat. See Matt's put a couple links in there for you. If you click, you can click directly on the link to submit a written comment. Online through our database. Also you'll find the email address in there and you'll also see a link to the recording of the public information session. That we hosted back on September 15th. So if you want more information, because like we said today, we're not here to answer questions. But during that session, we, we did answer questions, quite a few, and we also presented on the. On this activity, so you can see that there. Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing other hands raised. Matt, do you see any hands raised for comment that I'm missing or anybody I'm missing?
No, I do not.
Okay, then. Well, I guess what we'll do then is I can go ahead and read our closing comments and close this, this hearing down. So I'm going to read a closing statement right now. Bear with me as I bring it up. Okay, so as a reminder. Oh, excuse me, I shouldn't read that because that was from last time that we were holding another hearing on the sixth, but that's no longer true because today is the sixth. All right, so if, if you did not make comments today or wish to make additional comments, you may do so at that time. By using a written comment. Also, public comment period for accepting the written comments is open until October 19th, 2020. We'll consider all comments received prior to making a final permit decision. Written comments may be submitted online in our My Waters database. Directions can be found in documents you can access in the webinar, so in the chat box you'll see the link. Comments can also be submitted to Jessica Stiles at the following address. Water Resources Division, Eagle. PO Box 30458. Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7958. You can also make a comment. By email. And here's the email address and it's up on the screen as well, but for those on the phone, it's eagle, E-G-L-E. Dash Enbridge, E-N-B-R-I-D-G-E. Dash comments, C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S. At Michigan.gov. Thank you for your comments and your cooperation. We appreciate your interest and that you took the time to be here today. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you again. All right, with that, I'm gonna ask if Teresa, Tarek, Christine or James have any. Parting comments, I guess?
Just thank you to all who showed up again tonight. I know a lot of the folks who registered. Showed up at the first public hearing on NPDS and, and got their comments on the record at that time, so. I think folks often registered for one hearing and then registered for the next hearing, not knowing which hearing they were actually going to attend. But we did hear from a, a lot of folks tonight that were different than we heard at the first NPDS hearing, so thank you for, for joining us. And for those of you who are interested, we'll be back here on Thursday night, same time, same place. To go over the resource permit applications that are in-house to get your comments on that too. So again, thank you for taking time tonight to join us. We look forward to seeing you again on Thursday if you choose to join us. But thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks Teresa, Christine or Tarek. Okay. All right, up on the screen, I've got the next public hearing, like Teresa mentioned. October 8th, 6pm. And again, that one's going to be the tunnel construction involving potential wetman, potential wetland impacts and Great Lakes bottom lands permitting. So that's that one. We did record the hearing tonight and we'll be posting that along with all the other recordings related to both this. Application as well as the, the wetlands one. On the line five website, you can see that at the bottom of the screen. Matt also clicked the link out for it, set the link out, it's Michigan.gov. Slash line five. So if you go there, you scroll down a little bit, you're going to find all the recordings. That we've got as well as information about the October 8th public hearing as well. All right, so thanks to the staff that were here listening in the comments and thank you for all of you for joining us tonight on this beautiful evening in October. Thank you for joining us and have a great rest of your evening.